All right. Good evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the public for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase. Coral Hauck.
Present.
Maher Rafiq is not here. Cecile MacIver asked to be excused. Robert Mettler.
Here.
Mustafa Mansray.
Yeah.
Charles Brown. Robert Thomas said he may be out, so we'll just say he's excused. Jennifer Ragno.
Here.
Godwin Amalula and Chairman Orsini.
Here. So apparently, we have no minutes, no resolutions, and no discussion to go through, so we'll go right to the opening of the public comments for any non-agenda items that don't have their own separate hearing. So if you're here for Three Ronson, it'll be open to the public for that. So with that, I ask for a motion to open.
I move.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the meeting is now open to the public for any general planning comments on items that are not on the current agenda.
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And carries. So our only hearing tonight is Three Ronson LLC, PLN 1900004, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. As the board is aware, the applicant is seeking approval to construct an approximately 3,000 square foot fast food restaurant with a drive-through and a drive-up ATM in an existing shopping center located at 1165 Route 27 and identified as Lot 43 in Block 88.01 on the township's tax maps. The proposal involves associated modifications to the parking lot layout, grading, utilities, landscaping, and lighting. Specifically, the applicant is seeking preliminary major site plan approval with respect to the fast food restaurant with a drive-through and preliminary and final major site plan approval with respect to the drive-up ATM. In addition, the applicant is seeking a minor variance to DVA for the maximum impervious coverage requirement where 70% is permitted and 70.82% is proposed. The record will show that the applicant has satisfied both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the variance request. In support of the project, the applicant will present the testimony of its site engineer and planner, Tony Gallerano. In addition, the applicant's traffic engineer, Betsy Dolan, is in the audience, and she will be called to testify, if necessary, to address any comments or questions that may arise during the presentation that Tony is unable to answer or unqualified to answer. As a matter of record-keeping, I am in receipt of the following reports. One, Department of Planning and Zoning dated March 8, 2019. Two, CME Associates Engineering Report dated March 18, 2019. Three, the Police Traffic Safety Bureau dated March 13, 2019. Four, the DPW dated March 18, 2019. Five, the Fire Prevention dated March 19, 2019. And six, the Sewers Authority dated March 19, 2019. With that, I would like to call up my first witness, the site engineer/planter.
If you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
It says it's Mark.
One instruction with respect to the microphones.
Out of any three mics, one will always be out of order.
Denied.
Red beans. Red beans, battery issues.
One over on the...
I shut it off when I was done talking. Do I have to leave it on?
As long as you remember.
I will remember.
Because I'm telling you, I'm in the rate in the line of fire. I can hold a shrapnel for you guys not talking.
You've got big shoulders.
I'm going to put you as a human shield.
Okay. How's that?
Can swear man again? Did we hear it?
Pardon me.
Okay.
If you could answer the, "Do you swear the, tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?"
I do.
Okay. State your name, spell your last name, and please give us your address for the record, please.
Okay. It's Anthony Gallerano, spelled G-A-L-L-E-R-A-N-O. I went to Farm of Harbor Consultants. We're located at 320 North Avenue East in Cranford, New Jersey.
And if you could, Tony, for the benefit of the board, please give your background and qualifications.
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science degree from New Jersey Institute of Technology in Civil Engineering. I graduated in 1984.
We don't need your CV necessarily. Just, are you licensed?
I'm a licensed engineer and planner.
And you're going to offer testimony as both an engineer and a planner?
Yes, correct.
Okay. You're accepted.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. And just for the record, the site plan was prepared under your direction?
Yes, it was.
And if you could describe the site and the area around the site, please.
Okay. First, I have an aerial exhibit which depicts the subject property with respect to their surrounding area. So if we're to look at the exhibit, we've outlined the property with a red outline.
If I could just interrupt you for one second. Is this, this is a new exhibit?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So we'll designate this A1 for the record? All right.
Okay. So we've also shown the adjoining lots with the yellow lines. This property is identified as 1165 New Jersey State Highway Route 27. It's designated as Lot 43, Block 8801, as per the township tax maps. It is located at the intersection of Veronica and Route 27, as shown on the exhibit. It, across, on the opposite side of Route 27, it actually, there's New Brunswick Township and North Brunswick Township, both located on the opposite side of Route 27. Basically, this is a general business zone, and the bulk of the properties within that GB zone along Veronica Avenue all consist of commercial properties. The four corners at Route 27 and Veronica each contain a gas station. Directly on the opposite side of Veronica Avenue is a stop and shop, and then as you move further down Veronica, there's just a variety of commercial uses. This is a five-acre property. It's actually an oversized lot in the zone. The requirement is 80,000 square feet. This property contains 217,811 square feet. Okay. With that, I do have an additional exhibit which I'm going to go to soon as it comes out. Okay. This is a...
So just for the record, mark that A2, and just describe it. What is A2?
Okay. A2 is a colorized version of the site plan. So the property currently contains two buildings, which we've outlined or highlighted on the exhibit in the light tan shading. The site contains two access points, one to Route 27, one to Veronica Avenue. The exit, or egress and exit to Route 27 is a right turn only. The driveway to Veronica Avenue is a full two-way, no limitation on that, no limitation on that driveway. The existing improvements basically consist of what you would find in any shopping center. We have an improved parking area, curbing, lighting, landscaped areas, refuse areas, and some green areas. There is a stormwater basin located at the, I guess it's the northwest corner of the property. That basically picks up all of the drainage from the site, and that was installed with the original shopping center back, I guess, somewhere in the mid to late 80s. So what the applicant is proposing to do, which again is depicted on the exhibit, is to construct two improvements. One is a fast food drive-through pad site containing 3,000 square feet and then an ATM, a standalone ATM kiosk, which, both of which are located along the frontage of Veronica Avenue. So first, specifically with the fast food, fast food drive-through, this is going to be a 3,000 square foot pad site. As Ms. Jennings pointed out, we're only asking for preliminary approval at this point, being that there's no specific tenant selected for this pad site. It's basically just right now kind of a speculative building right now. The, both the, the drive-through will have a, both a drive-through lane and a bypass lane, both of which will be, you know, access from the parking area. There will be obviously a modification to the existing parking in order to accommodate both the ATM and the drive-through.
And with respect to the drive-through, we're seeking both preliminary and final site plan for that aspect.
That's correct. That's correct. There will be a masonry dumpster enclosure, and we will agree, and this was in one of the, your professionals' comments, to construct that to match the building, once we know what the building's going to look like. There also is a paver sidewalk that extends from the corner of Veronica Avenue and Route 27. I'm just going to point with the pointer. And that's to provide ADA access from that intersection to the 3,000 square foot building. And then with respect specifically to the drive-up ATM machine, with this particular feature, we are requesting both preliminary and final site plan approval. And if I could pan over to that. Okay. So that, that's basically just going to be a, what we call an ATM kiosk machine. This will also have a drive-up lane, which also, again, will be access from the parking area. Will have a small canopy over the top of the dispensing area. We are, again, providing striping and providing a 10-foot wide drive-up lane for access. There is, we do have a detail of this, which I'm going to get to a little bit later. So with respect to the access parking and loading and the site circulation, as I mentioned, there are two, two points of ingress and egress from the site. The Route 27 does have a restriction for left-hand turns. We are not proposing any new access or exit points. We have requested a letter of no interest to the DOT, which I do not believe we have a response yet. This, this app, this project will not require a major access permit from the DOT, being, you know, given the nature of the project. We have provided a truck-turning template, which is part of the application set, I believe it was Sheet 11, and we have demonstrated that a WB50 vehicle, which is a full tractor-trailer, can access the site and maneuver through the site as required. There are 157 parking spaces being provided, where 151 are required. There will be 13 new parking spaces, including one ADA space near the fast food area or the proposed 3,000 square foot pad. There is no new parking proposed for the ATM, obviously because it's strictly for a drive-up only. As part of our site design, we did address stormwater management. We, the only, there's only an increase of impervious coverage of .11 acres or 4,791 square feet. We are providing a stormwater collection system consisting of inlets and pipe to direct all of the runoff from the, you know, modified area to the existing detention basin. That detention basin, again, was installed with the original site plan, original construction of the plaza, and when this, we did get a look at the original stormwater management report that was prepared for the original application, and what we found that the basin required a volume of 47,000 cubic feet, and what we found was that there was, it was actually designed to have 53,000 cubic feet of storage. So there was 6,000 square feet of additional storage built into that detention basin. We ran an analysis, and we did provide a stormwater report, and we found that due to the slight increase in impervious coverage, only an additional 2,984 cubic feet of extra storage would be, of storage would be required. So the existing basin has enough capacity to handle the increase in impervious coverage as a result of the proposed development. And again, we are providing additional inlets to collect, you know, the stormwater runoff from the area to convey it to the existing detention basin. There is, as again, as you can see from the exhibit, we've highlighted all of the landscaping in, on the exhibit, and we are providing substantial landscaping along Veronica Avenue, wraps around the corner to Route 27. This basically will provide some screening and some additional aesthetic value to the, to the new development in that location. We are also, and I need to zoom out, providing some additional landscaping about the center of the parking lot. What we've done is we've removed some of the impervious coverage there, some of the pavement area, and created a landscaping area consisting of some shade trees and shrubbery. We've also, to the rear of the longer building, along, I guess that's the northerly property line, we've removed parking spaces along that back area. And what we did was, we did that in order to try to balance the new impervious that's being created as a result of the bank kiosk or the ATM kiosk and the new 3,000 square foot pad. We've also then re-landscaped that area, and that's consisting of shade trees and various shrubs, as you can see from the exhibit. As a result, we are adding 57 trees, 149 shrubs, and 594 perennials to the existing landscaping on the site. So I'm going to move on to the lighting. We are proposing some additional lighting in the area of the new structures. There will also be lighting, specific lighting for the ATM machine. Under state statute, ATM machines have their own, have their own specific lighting requirements for safety and security. Within the first five, within five feet of the face of the ATM machine, required to have a foot candle value of 10. Once you get beyond that five foot, then you're allowed to have a two-foot candle intensity beyond that point. Your ordinance does require a 2.5-foot candle average in a parking area, so we do comply with that, which will satisfy the ATM requirements under state statute. So we believe that we are meeting your lighting requirements, and we are, in addition, meeting the requirements under the state statute that is specific for ATM machines.
Will the lighting, excuse me, will the lighting be LED?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Absolutely. So with respect to signs, there is no sign yet selected for the fast food, obviously because there's no tenant, and when this application comes back for final approval with a, with a specific tenant, then that signage will then be presented at that time. There is a description on the side of the ATM machine, which basically just says Bank of America. That's basically four foot, seven inches, and I will get to that, actually, I'm going to go there right now, to that, to that elevation, just to go over what that kiosk looks like. So I'm going to move to the actual plan set. This is a exact copy of the plan that was submitted with the application, so this is unmodified.
We don't need to mark that, right?
If you could just let us know what page you're on, once you get to it.
Yeah. This is Sheet 10, again, which was part of the exact, exact plan that was submitted with the application. So this shows the elevation and side view of what the ATM machine is going to look like. It does have a small, like I said, a small kind of canopy over the top, which is just basically to shield the transaction area. I think it speaks for itself. You can see the colors and configuration. And again, there is the, you know, Bank of America name and logo on each side of the ATM machine, basically for identification, so people obviously know what ATM machine they're using, what bank they're using. So that's, that's pretty much the overall plan, site plan and proposals for the proposed improvements. There is one variance that's required for impervious coverage. In the GP zone, your maximum impervious coverage is 70%, and we're requesting a variance for 70.82%. So we're 0.82% over. I do believe that is the minimus, and we are complying with all of the other requirements in the GP zone. So of course, since this is a C2 variance, we do need to provide the proper proofs for the, for the variance. So just first looking at the negative criteria, I mean, again, this is a very small increase. Any small additional increase in runoff, it will be mitigated by use of the existing detention basin. We are providing substantial additional landscaping to the site. We did make an effort to try to remove as much existing impervious to try to balance the increase and try to keep that increase to a minimum. So I don't believe this is going to have any negative impact on runoff. It wouldn't have any impact aesthetically. That small increase really, from, from a visual standpoint, really wouldn't even be noticeable. With respect to the positive criteria, even though, you know, it is somewhat of a de minimis variance, I do believe under the purpose of zoning, it would fit under Paragraph M, which is the efficient use of land. And with that, I have no other testimony.
Yeah. Let me just speak real, I'll just add to the discussion about the variance. We did discuss with the applicant the possibility of getting rid of some additional parking, as has been testified. They're getting rid of some parking to try to balance the impervious. I think if they were to take out a few more spaces, they would comply, but they felt, based on the needs of the shopping center, that they needed the parking that's still on the plan. So I guess, you know, it really, it's kind of a balancing of what's the best design for the site, and they felt, again, that the amount that they're now proposing is what's really needed.
Thanks. Thanks, Mark. Do you, at this, the only other person you have is traffic, right?
Well, we were only going to call traffic if there was a specific traffic question because it is permitted use.
Right.
And there's really no impact, and we're going to get that letter of no interest from the DOT, so not sure. We really need to hear traffic testimony.
I mean, the only question I would ask is, do the levels of service change at that intersection?
Right. So she submitted a report that is in the phone.
That intersection is actually going to be reconfigured.
Yeah. I mean, we can have Betsy come up and just...
But we can do that in a second, though. I just want to go through while we have your planner and engineer, the staff reports, and the only thing I need to know is if you can comply with them, or if there's any points that you can comply with and/or would like to discuss with us.
We are prepared to comply with all of your professionals' comments and comments from your various departments. So we will address those to their satisfaction.
Okay. That's all I need. So yeah, if you'd like to call...
Sure, Mr. Chairman. No problem. Betsy, if you wouldn't mind coming up, please.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
So we've had you testify any number of times since this board, and I assume your credentials haven't changed?
Nothing's changed, and my license is in good standing.
Excellent. And you're accepted.
Thank you.
So, I mean, the major question I had, and we heard this with a different application a couple of weeks ago, it's more for my edification, really the board's edification than your specific application even. So I heard that the intersection of 27 and Howe Lane is actually going to be redesigned into a traffic circle.
Wow. That's news to me. I've not heard that.
Okay. I was, I was hoping to pump you for information in case you had.
No. In fact...
You know, because just that, that application also, it was further down Veronica, actually the back of Terra Greens for a warehouse, million-square-foot warehouse, not insignificant. But the intersection that they chose to, because most of their traffic would go that way as tractor-trailers, to, you know, 27 to Jersey to 18, or to Route 1 then to 18, or to the turnpike or the parkway. So they chose to examine that intersection, and aside from showing that the level of service wouldn't really be affected by their application, I happened to hear about this traffic circle, so I was just curious.
Well, we submitted probably two months ago now a request for a letter of no interest on this application because it doesn't trigger a need for a new permit, the trip generation. When you take the credit for the side street access, we don't need a permit, and we're not touching the driveway. So it was submitted. My partner Gary Dean was at DOT for another meeting, and someone at Major Access said, hey, you know, what about these calculations, and what about that sidewalk connection that was just presented from the corner? They said they might permit for that. We figured we'd come here and see what happened. Nobody said anything about any circles, improvements, nothing. The only thing they said was, we might want you to submit a sidewalk application for that little stretch that you're going to have in our right-of-way. So that's, that's the significance of this application as related to what may be going on.
Okay.
Global, globally at DOT.
So as it, as it currently stands today, the levels of service there will remain the same in terms of...
I would expect them to. We did not do a formal analysis, but the way DOT wants us to look at this is as if it's an independent, freestanding fast food restaurant, which would generate 77 to maybe 83 vehicles in an hour, but that doesn't reflect the fact that it's in a shopping center, and people are coming to the shopping center for one or more uses. So when you look at it as a shopping center, there's really not a significant increase in trips, so therefore, there wouldn't be any real change to the operational characteristics of the roadway or the site driveways.
And just for the record, you did submit, though, a traffic impact statement dated January 17, 2019, which reflects basically what you just said.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, one question.
Yep.
The amount of queuing that is proposed, can you, can you address that? How many cars, how the queuing would work? How many cars would be...
At the drive-through? Yeah, sure.
And then, and then how, because this is being built, or proposed, I should say, kind of as speculative and looking for a tenant, how that might modify based on if it's one type of fast food place versus another?
Right. We've looked at sort of a traditional fast food restaurant, Wendy's, Taco Bell, Burger King, McDonald's type of thing, because the trip generation numbers have changed for the new uses like Dunkin' Donuts, Tim Hortons, and Starbucks. That's a whole different category now, and the 3,000 square foot building is much larger than those type of coffee doughnut shops are typically designed at. So this is more of a traditional, you know, burger, Taco Bell type of use. That said, we have queuing for nine in the drive-through. Industry standard is eight. There's plenty of parking in the area, and the location of the, this restaurant will be where the parking demand isn't so great because that medemerge or whatever the medical center is, is facing the prime parking area. So this is taking over the underutilized parking. It's got a generous stacking supply. The bypass is there, too, so it's sort of become self-policing. But eight's the magic number for these type of uses. We've got nine. And as for the queuing at the ATM, I know there's one at a shopping center by me in Wachung, and if you ever see one vehicle there, that's it. I think we've got stacking for three or four, so it's very generous, and I would never expect that to be, to be full.
What, would the site plan have to be modified if there was a Tim Hortons, Dunkin' Donuts, or Starbucks?
The building would probably be reduced from the size that's shown now. It's about 3,000 on the plan, and those are more like 2,000.
What about the queuing, though? You'd said that the queuing for those types of uses has changed... You'd said that the queuing for those types of uses has changed. How has it changed?
The trip generation for those uses has changed. They used to be lumped in, in the ITE trip generation manual, they used to be lumped in with fast food. But now the latest manual separates it into what's called a coffee and donut shop with drive-through, or a coffee and donut shop without drive-through. So it's very specific, and they are higher, which is why if we, if we wanted to keep with our letter of no interest or sidewalk application and not have to go for a major permit, we would never do a 3,000-square-foot coffee-donut shop, because the numbers would just be a lot higher. We've looked at queuing at the different places. Again, if there's room for the queuing, maybe you get to nine or 10 at a coffee-donut shop, but we're still designing for eight. That's the magic number for those uses as well. You're welcome.
Okay, so are there any questions from the board? If we have to bring him back up, we will. If the planner, engineer, or Traffic? Carl?
I have a question for the engineer.
You don't have to be sworn in again, when sworn you're always.
The, I understand you did comply, agree to comply with all the staff comments. How do you propose to comply with CME's report, G5, where it talks about the minor development ordinance, which the township has for stormwater?
Yeah, again, the stormwater will be addressed within the existing basin. So we did submit a stormwater management report, and we do address the 210 and 100-year storms in accordance.
And that's fine, that's fine for the volume. How are you going to address the infiltration requirement that's the township's ordinance?
The infiltration, we would have to look at the basin itself and see if the infiltration could be handled within the basin, because the basin does retain water for a certain amount of time, and it would have to, you know, have to, but it could infiltrate through the basin. But again, it's all depending on the soil types. I mean, we would have to get a soil log and do a permeability test. We may find that the soil isn't permeable, which means that it's not percolating now, it's not going to percolate in the future, so.
And one other comment. Typically, the township requires water lines to be within pavement areas. I note you have, see, you have a note on the plans to be coordinated with the water company. That would be the comment from the water department.
We would have to take a look. I mean, if the water, if the water department did not want them, you know, wanting them a particular way, then we would have to make the adjustment. But we put, we routed them, which was, you know, seemed like the most logical place to go. But if the water company has specific requirements, then we're going to have to comply.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? At all? Okay. Ted? I'll take that as an.
I just have a dim memory. There was something where said the applicant should testify, too. Can't remember what it was.
All right, well, if you, oh. Oh, I think, I think Peter pointed it out, so it says testimony should be provided indicating whether the reduction in dumpsters will negatively affect the trash storage removal at the existing facility.
We did discuss that with the applicant, and we are modifying that rear area, but we are providing a trash area on a concrete pad, and there's still two existing smaller areas that are going to remain. So our discussion with the owner, he believes that the area we are providing will be adequate for continuation of refuse and the grease traps.
At worst, they have to pick up more often.
That's correct. They'll pick up more often if needed.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, if not, entertain a motion to open to the public on this?
I'm moved.
I guess I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for any questions or comments on this application?
Being no one coming forward, I would move that the public hearing on this application be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public portion is closed. Have any summation you'd like to make?
Oh, yeah, essentially, we're looking at a permitted use. We're seeking a preliminary approval for the fast-food restaurant with drive-through, a preliminary and final site plan approval for the ATM. We're seeking only one very minor variance. We think this is a good two uses for the site, to keep it active, and we respectfully request that the board grant an approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer a few suggested conditions?
Okay.
Well, one, not really a condition, but I'd suggest that the resolution indicate that the, at the time of final, there are some things that they're going to have to finalize. Obviously, when they actually have a tenant, you, we may need to reevaluate the queuing. They've provided a, kind of a generic drive-through and demonstrated, in a generic sense, that the site plan works, but obviously it may or may not need to be fine-tuned depending on the actual tenant that they have. The commercial design standards that are in our ordinance, when they actually have a tenant, they should look at Article, what is that, Roman numeral 16A, and seek to incorporate compliance with those commercial design standards as possible. As far as a condition, the, I don't believe the lighting for the ATM was on the plans. So consistent with the testimony, I would recommend that the applicant be provided to demonstrate on the plans how they minimally comply with the state requirements for ATMs, so they could provide that information to staff, and then demonstrate on the plans how they meet those and don't go above what the state requires.
And since Peter is helpfully writing these things down, maybe I'll.
And staff reports, obviously.
Yeah. Let me see if I can offer a motion. So I'll make a motion for preliminary approval of the restaurant, for preliminary and final approval of the ATM, and for the single variance in lot coverage, or impervious coverage of 70.82%, where the permitted is 70%. At the time of final subdivision, or final approval, not site plan, sorry, approval for the restaurant, we will review, the applicant should provide an additional review of queuing, the design standards in the ordinance, the commercial design standards in the ordinance. I'm actually interpreting your abbreviation.
Listen, I wrote for me. I didn't know you were going to read it.
No, actually, you're doing real well. And for the, and demonstrating the site plan's compliance with the state standards for lighting of the ATM. And of course, compliance with those data reports.
And presumably, at that time, they'll present plans for a sign, but, you know, not knowing the tenant, there's no point thinking about that now.
Exactly. Okay, so that's my motion. We need a second.
Second.
Sorry, Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Oral Hauck?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Manzri?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay, given that we have no further business, I think our next meeting is the first Wednesday in May. And so with that, I move to adjourn.